Everybody ready? Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This meeting is being recorded on CNET's live YouTube channel. First up, does anybody have any public comments on anything on or off the agenda that they would like to speak about? Yes, Ms. Miller.
Karen Miller, Hoult Lane, I'm just wondering what's on the statuses of the transport van for the EMS?
As far as?
Well, last month, again, you were talking about, I guess, buying another van and then selling the van that was purchased.
That's the plan.
And I thought that we were going to be discussing it this?
It got moved to next month.
Okay.
Because of going back and forth with the solicitor.
To get a contract drawn up.
Okay, that's all I was wondering, because it's not on the agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Cliff Neil, Chanelley Drive, I'm actually here as board supervisors reporting to EMS, simply to say if you have any questions or concerns that I can answer for you. So I have no other statements.
I don't have any concerns. I read the proposal and it looks good the way it is right now, and I hope the rest of the board feels that way, but I think they do.
Very good.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Gil Jones, Wintep Drive, just seeing if there's an update on moving the recycling from here up to Ira.
Okay.
Since it was approved at that one meeting.
I don't have the answer to that. Chuck, do you have a time frame?
I can update. So I didn't want to move them yet until the site is a little nicer, a little more expanded, and then get a fence back up to contain any blowing bottles and things like that.
Okay.
And it's just honestly been time.
Time.
So I am, I am working on it, but just trying to juggle all the projects and so I will try to make more headway on that very soon.
Do you have kind of a ballpark of when you think that might happen? I mean, do you think it'll happen?
Everything going on right now?
I know you have road projects. I just, this year, you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So hopefully there'll be some headway in the next month.
Okay.
But I've been playing catch-up on some repairs in the shop and as well as trying to get road projects done too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of June 12, 2025?
So I'm going to move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any comments or questions by the supervisors? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right, next up, consent agenda. I'm not going to read the details. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, man.
Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Anything by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Strategic guided services investments consensus of comments. This is about the Center Region Council of Governments Executive Director who's here with us tonight. I guess, have you got anything you want to add? Take away?
Thank you. I'll just take a couple of minutes for introduction. It's great to see everybody again. I know that the strategic guide is a different process than what we have done in the past. You will have remembered that we had the capital improvement plan as well as a program plan that both had to be reviewed separately. This is now one complete guide to everything that has been proposed for the following year. It is designed to be a more useful document for our elected officials and for the public. Everything is broken down by section. You can find it by budget section. It works just like one of your municipal codebooks. So if you were, I'm just going to grab one at random here, in the Millwork Marsh Nature Center, that's R11, everything there will be R11-1, R11-2. So if there are changes, amendments along the way, it only affects that one section. It doesn't affect the entire document, which makes it a lot easier to update for people as we move through it. We are working on getting better data to share with our elected officials as well. So if you go through here, you'll see a number of new charts that do a better job of showing progress and tracking on a number of fronts, particularly on finances and the operations, with a big focus on parks and being able to drill down into specific program costs. But that'll be happening across the COG. Is the longer I'm here, the more we will drill down to be able to provide program-level performance metrics for everybody. We went through each of the committees, asked for ideas for what metrics people wanted to see, and those are the things that we will begin tracking for inclusion in future years. The other thing I just want to mention, this year we also issued a comment operating guideline at the request of the elected officials to help guide how comments are provided to us. And I just want to go through the intent section, which is that municipal comments are intended to reflect a unified position or shared perspective of the governing body on SIGZ proposals. These comments are not votes or formal approvals, but valuable feedback that helps shape program direction and resource prioritization. If you leave a positive comment today, that does not mean that that is getting included in the budget. If you leave a negative comment, it doesn't mean that something is automatically being removed from the budget. The elected officials will make those choices during the actual budget process. This is an opportunity to ask questions, and we will provide feedback. And that is the other really important difference between past years and this year, which is that my staff will provide feedback on every comment that is provided to us on these proposals. You will not see anything that just says noted or recognized on there. Even if we are not able to accommodate a request, we will explain why we cannot accommodate that request and what we will do to mitigate any dangers that you might have brought up. We will also be highlighting the top negative comment along with the top positive comments in the final document that comes out. One of the comments I heard a lot during last year's budget process was that people would make some kind of negative comment about a proposal, and then they felt that it was ignored or was placed down at the bottom and people were not paying attention to it. So this will almost be like the Amazon ranking style for comments where even if there's five communities that support something and there's one that does not, we will give that one negative comment equal billing to make sure that everybody can see that and take that into consideration, because that one community may have seen something that the other five did not. So we want to draw attention to those negative comments just as much as the positive comments. And then we will provide that feedback in written form within, I think we have two weeks from next Friday, to respond to everything that was submitted to us. So at that, if there are any specific questions, I will do my best to answer them.
I have one, Ben.
Yes.
Well, okay, we're, we're, we have a motion to direct the staff to provide the consensus comments, which haven't been compiled yet. Okay?
They have been compiled.
Oh, they have been compiled?
Yeah.
Okay, so when's that, that'll happen after the motion is, is passed?
I would just don't.
Okay. That, what we were, what we commented, what I commented on anyhow, was the, the smaller document, not the, you're right, not the big binder. Do we, do you want comments on the big binder as well?
So everything in the big binder is encapsulated in short form on that small document.
Really?
Yeah, please look up more information like I do sometimes.
If you want more information, there's more information in the binder, but we.
I mean, I got, I got the short document well before I got the binder. And I had time, I looked at the short document, but I did not look in depth into the binder. So, and we're going to give you consensus comments tonight. That's, there's a little bit of a process concern that I have there.
It was also linked in the same email where those, that came out.
Well, yeah, I, I don't do well with large documents on, online, so.
So, hey, we, I can't go back in time to fix things. So this year, we asked each community how many physical copies, and those were provided a few weeks ago to each of the municipalities. So if you, in, in the future, we can make sure that more copies are, full copies are getting over here, if that's possible.
Ben, that's not the issue. I was just saying that that is a new kind of document. It's a combination of the, the capital improvement program and a program plan incorporated, both incorporated. So it's a different kind of document. I was used to reading them separately, but that's okay. I understand why you did that. I just, I guess I was not necessarily, I didn't necessarily understand, you know, I did review the shorter one, okay?
Yeah.
And, and provided feedback. I did not review the larger binder.
So in, in the larger binder, you're going to find kind of full agency overviews for each section of the budget that are provided in here, along with some background information, some operating details where, where those are available, any of the data that we can provide. That went through the finance committee as well. They made some suggestions on different formatting for data that would help them out, and so those changes were made. The other thing that you'll see in here are the proposals that you would have been accustomed to seeing in the past, the one sheeters on each proposal. Those are still in here so that you can see the individual breakdowns, but those were summarized and provided on those comment sheets for you. The comment sheets also had the rankings, which are one of the important items on there. So you have an agency ranking and then also a COG-wide ranking. Most of the times, I took COG ranking, just to be completely clear, is my ranking of the totality of all proposals. I do not rank anything that does not cost you all money. So I put in several proposals for removal of unfilled positions in the admin office. I believe there were like three and a half positions that had been proposed and were in the program plan supposed to be instituted over the next three years. I don't see a need for those, nor do I have the physical space to bring anybody in for those kinds of positions. So I proposed eliminating those completely. That's no cost. Those people don't exist, so I'm not going to rank those and ask you to put comment in on not spending more money.
Okay.
When I don't want to spend the money. We're trying to focus on the main items that are in there that will actually impact you and your budgets and our operations.
Okay, thanks. Amy, I have a question. The consensus comments, they'll be issued, they'll be given to Ben tonight, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Will we see those, or have we seen them?
I've emailed them to you.
You did, today?
No, a couple of days ago.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I've received them.
Okay.
So I'll check, but I don't think I've received them.
And Ben, as part of the finance committee, will we be reviewing those comments through the budgetary process, I assume?
Through the budget process, yes. His staff has to go through and respond before your next meeting, but we will also.
But we'll see their comments and your responses as we go through our process.
Yes, you will.
Okay.
And that will be provided to all elected officials. So that will become a part of the overall document. It's why we did it in binder form, so it's easier to insert things later on and add to this.
Ben, I got a question, not necessarily on that, but since you're here. You know, the planning commission's kind of, or not planning commission, Center Region Planning has been sort of upside down, mixed around and everything else. Are you possibly looking at reformulating the organization the way it's, way it's set up to serve the municipalities, or are you just going to, as I said before, it just seems like we, we have like a total wipeout of planners and then it gets rebuilt and then it just falls apart and, and, you know, it, it would be nice if it was a little more continuity. We had great continuity for a number of years, but.
Certainly.
And I'm not putting blame on anybody, I'm just saying that.
No, certainly. One of the things that we are planning to do, we'll probably start in about two months and those will go out, and we'll ask for representatives from each community will be to start the same thing that we're doing with Fire and Emergency Management Service, which is to have some monthly meetings around the future of that agency and what our communities want to see out of that agency. When we most recently had the, the two departures, I did not want to add staff into that agency because it was becoming clear to me that there was less of a need for some of the things that we were offering than in the past. So by doing an internal promotion and not hiring anybody else, I was able to save some money for that agency and for your municipal budgets while providing the core services that were required to perform. Then we will start the study with our municipalities on what is it that you want from us, and if it's anything more, then we can look to add in the future. But it is much easier to add on later than it is for me to keep contracting after adding little pieces to it. So yes, we will be examining that whole agency and how that functions. The, the MPO side, I don't expect to change. That has been extremely stable and it has worked extremely well. Our new grants coordinator has been very successful in bringing money into the organization. But on the regional planning side, yes, I absolutely expect to have more conversations on that future.
All right. Well, I was just curious, I don't want to cover too many details, so. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Make a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay, move to.
Second.
Oh, I was going to read it.
Anybody wants to make a motion?
I was going to read it.
The motion needs to be made, okay. Patty, were you making the motion?
Yes. I move that we move to direct staff to provide the Center Region Council of Governments Executive Director with consensus of comments of the strategic guide to services and investments.
Moving second. Any question by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you all so much, and we look forward to reading your comments. Thank you.
Good to see you out here in the hinterlands, so.
Certainly. Anytime you want to be out here, please just say the word. We're happy to.
All righty. Next up, acknowledgement resignation of Wesley Layton as a full-time public works laborer. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next up, move to appoint Wesley Layton as part-time public works laborer.
Lance Brown.
Hmm?
Sorry, what was that?
Are you on nine?
I'm on eight.
Eight. Appointment of Wesley Layton as part-time public works.
Oh, part-time.
We just did resignation, right?
Right.
Yeah, we just did resignation. We're going to do the appointment for part-time.
I'd move to appoint Wes part-time labor.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any questions? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Layton has changed position. Schedule adjustment of Lance Brown, part-time public works laborer. Do I hear a motion to make a adjustment from 24 hours per week to 30 hours per week? The pay remains the same at 20 per hour.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, resolution 2025-15 is the Center County Hazard Mitigation Plan adoption. Anybody want to hear the resolution read out loud?
Okay.
I read it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve resolution 2025-15?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Possible motion to set public hearing for residential zoning district revisions, and that would be for August 14 meeting. Do I hear a motion to do that?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Advertise for public hearing for Hoult's rezoning request for August 14, 2025. Do I hear a motion to advertise for the rezoning?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Call for the question. Signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Act Security Area Committee Appointments. Do I hear a motion to appoint anybody?
I, I guess I can move to appoint me.
And?
And Tom Weaver, Steve Malott, Jim Smith, and Roseanne Hoover as committee members.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, possible motion to advertise sale of a piece of equipment.
There's several pieces here. Yep. So I'll move to, to approve this advertising the sale of the 2008 GMC 3500 truck and snowplow, 2008 flink, flink V, V box spreader, that's a mouthful, 1987 John Deere 210 seatback show using municipal.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Township reports. Does anybody from the treasures or the finance or the secretary of the roadmaster have anything they would like to add?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Authority boards and reports. I know Tammy mentioned she had something she wanted to add.
Yeah, finance committee was today. Nothing really new to report. We're working on continuing to work on the fund, fund balance policy for various areas. And then in terms of the Upper Bald Eagle COG, so we had that meeting last week, and again, I apologize for not getting the written report in, but I wanted to bring it to our attention at this point basically as a information only. So Union Township has approached Port Matilda Fire Company in terms of coverage for their area. So there was quite a bit of discussion there. Hook and Ladder was there as well to join in on part of that conversation. Ultimately, what we decided and we went back to Port Mat, Port Matilda, not Port Matilda, Milesburg as well as Hook and Ladder, that we all agreed that they need to go through a third-party mediation to try to work out their differences.
Are you speaking about Miles Township?
I'm sorry.
Union Township.
Union Township and.
Milesburg Borough.
That's Milesburg.
Milesburg.
Okay.
Yes. Milesburg Fire Company, yes, who currently services Union Township. So the contract is at its end, and they need to make a decision like within 30, well, no, it's less than 30 days, as to whether they're going to renew. Past contracts have been 10 years, which is.
Are they talking about redoing for the entirety of Union Township or just part of Union Township?
The entirety of Union Township.
Entirety.
So, but because we know that there are some unresolved differences between Milesburg Fire Company and Union Township, we have strongly urged them to go seek third-party mediation to try to resolve the differences. And. And if that doesn't get resolved, then we said they can come back to us, but they also must approach the other fire companies in the area as well. There are certain parts of Union where we are mutual aid already and are responding. So it'd be a little uptick in calls, but then there's other parts of Union Township where we are not the closest. There's other entities that are closer for responding. So there is some safety issues there. Yes.
The main issue is the cost, right?
Well, it would be additional dollars to Port Matilda Fire Company if Port Matilda Fire Company did pick them up. But it's also noted that the more calls you go on, the more expenses you have as well as wear and tear in equipment. So it's not just money in your pocket. So, you know, there's money in and money out. There's also a moral issue there in terms of just because they're unsatisfied with the current fire company, you know, doesn't mean that they should jump ship and just go next door. So, you know, there's a moral obligation to try to work out differences and, in, you know, ensure...
I know 504 comes down from Philsburg, the back way. Was there any part of that discussion with Philsburg at all, or?
They have, well, that, that's it. They hadn't approached anybody except for Port Matilda.
Okay.
Now granted, they did their due diligence and explained why they wanted, you know, why they approached Port Matilda in terms of Port Matilda's ratings, trainings, and all of that. But again, there's a moral obligation in terms of trying to work it out with the current fire, fire company as well as don't just go to one fire company. There's other entities that they can look at as well. So there, there's a bigger issue there than them just coming to us and saying, well, hey, you, can you cover us?
I was just thinking in terms of response time, it may be faster, like, that's why I was asking whether they were splitting the township or not.
Faster response with another entity and, you know, and, and maybe, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't really make sense for them to split the township, but, you know, if they have to leave Milesburg, maybe it does make sense to split the township for coverage area. I don't know. But until they go through the third-party mediation, we really kind of stop the conversation.
Do we know how many years Miles Township, or Miles Fire Company has covered Union Township?
I don't know, but I know their contracts are 10 years at a time, which is part of the issue. 10 years is a long time for a contract. So they obviously had a contract for 10 years prior to that. I, I don't, I have no idea. I don't know if anybody else knows how long they've been covering.
But at the meeting, it was stated that the cost for Miles Township, their fire company, look, fire company, to provide coverage to Union Township was a cost that Union Township did not want to pay. And that's why they're looking somewhere else.
Did not get that impression?
That's exactly what they said at the meeting.
Well, if you weren't there.
Well, I was at the main meeting when they talked.
Right, but both fire company and the township were there. So in the township, I believe that money was not the issue. It was more of some of the issues within the contract itself, not necessarily the money situation, so.
So, okay, they're going to go to some type of mediation to work out, try to work out their differences.
Yes.
All right. So I would expect next month, depending on how the mediation comes out, that may come back.
We'll probably hear from them again, but the cog was very hesitant to jump into this off the first pass.
Yeah, well, you don't want to irritate your neighbors.
Well, Port Matilda's covering five municipalities, as it is.
Well, right, but, you know, you've got to, you've got to deal with the moral issues first, so.
Anything else on that?
Yes. Also, they talked about, and Amy, I can work with you on this, but if we can send an email out, maybe, you know, its own email, out to our residents. So we have a number of lanes within the township that, you know, you go back and then it kind of splits in two or three different directions, and those lanes aren't always adequately labeled. You know, if this is lane X and Y and Z, sometimes they're not always labeled. And then when you get back those lanes, those houses themselves are not labeled. So trying to encourage people to...
You talking about 911 addressing or not?
911 addressing, so adequately...
We do have an ordinance that requires that.
Label their lanes as well as their houses. And also, since we've had a number of storms that have tipped trees and branches to varying degrees, to make sure that those driveways, lanes, access areas are clear by at least 13 feet up above. So they run into, you know, they not necessarily had the issue, but they noted some of those concerns. And then something I want to pass along to you, actually Chuck, because I forgot to talk to you about Granny Lane. Apparently there's a dry hydrant there that they are unable to get to because it's the wrong base around it, and I don't know who is responsible for that, but they basically can't use it because of the base that's there. So I don't know if that's your department or like those of the wire, wire company?
Um, Amy and I can pull the plans to see what, what the original agreement was for that.
That must be a board phone.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so just some of those safety things that they're, make sure that things are accessible and usable and stuff. I think they thought about that one after they had the big fire over here, and they were kind of doing some assessment of the fire hydrants and all that.
It's a wrong fitting on there.
It's the base. It's the base. Like, they can't get the trucks in because of the base.
Oh, okay.
They installed the dry hydrant, but they never installed a driveway.
A pad.
A stone.
Yeah, okay. All right, I get it.
But I'm not sure who that...
They complained about that.
So basically, it's not usable.
Right. I'm not sure who that falls on.
I don't know.
I mean, it's...
I'm not sure they knew either, so.
So obviously, if it's in my...
Have to see who the developer is and what they did.
I have no problem taking care of it, but obviously I can't extend myself beyond my reach.
Just something to note. I don't know what we need to check it, but...
No, we, we can look into it.
And then also, Port Matilda EMS has a new medical director, correct?
They do.
Do you want to...
I honestly thought it was, they just hired him, so the Geisinger physician.
Michael, Michael Moore, is that right?
Sounds right.
Yeah, I don't, other than that, I just knew the name, so, no.
He's under the Geisinger system, which is a benefit to us because there are equipment and medication expenses that they pick on behalf of the EMS agencies they cover, so.
Okay. I know that, that was... Other than that, I think that's the biggest thing. They are going to the firemen's relief. I think that meeting is coming up next week, and it's a little over 72,000 that they're going to ask for. So we'll wait and see how that turns out.
72,000?
Yes. There's, yes, a whole list of stuff that they're going to ask for the firemen's relief, and it's been an issue getting stuff from the firemen's relief, so we'll keep you updated in terms of how that turns out.
Appreciate that. Anything else? Any other supervisors have anything wish to add? About a motion to adjourn?
Settle move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you all for coming.